Yep.
There we go. He's busy talking this.
Call this meeting of Clinton City Council to order. Gina, will you call and roll?
Councilor McQueen.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harold.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilwoman Maynard.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
We'll hear a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman McBride will lead us into prayer and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for the opportunity to come and to serve you and to serve our citizens in the city of Clinton. Thank you, dear God, for all the employees and what they do each and every day. I pray your blessings upon them and protection for them. And I pray now that you would be with us as we do conduct business. Father, your word says if we lack wisdom in any capacity, all we have to do is ask and you will give it to us in abundance. So please help us to make wise decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes of the previous meeting, so we have to approve these individually.
Now.
Okay.
If you want to.
Is anybody having objections to approving them both together? You have before you the minutes of the April twenty-second regular meeting and the May sixth special call meeting. Do I have a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Recognition of visitors and citizens, do we have anybody that wants to give us accolades, maybe a complaint or two? Yes, sir. If you will, please approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Ryan. I am the systems administrator at the hospital in Oak Ridge.
Sir, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, I work or I live at nine eleven Loy Street in Clinton, Tennessee. I've lived there for about two years. I'm coming here on behalf of myself and my family and my neighbors. Some of them expressed interest to come here, but due to work and other circumstances couldn't make it, including Emmanuel Calva, who's my neighbor and his wife and their four children. Our neighborhood is having an issue with vehicles that are speeding and driving recklessly at all hours of the day and night. I personally have had one vehicle crash into my property. That was roughly about a month ago. And our whole neighborhood is filled with families. All of our homes are like starter homes, so most people there have children and pets that are outside playing around. We would like to request that speed bumps be added to our neighborhood to slow down the traffic. Ninety-nine percent of the traffic in our neighborhood is not people that live in our neighborhood, it's people who are trying to bypass the main roads and they are trying to do it quickly. And it is causing a danger to property and to lives. So on behalf of my neighbors and myself, we would like to request that speed bumps be added to our neighborhood.
This is, this is an increasing problem in a lot of neighborhoods and we have adopted a traffic program that you'll have to work with the city manager on, a traffic study, and he can, he can tell you about that.
Okay.
You said you live on Loy Street?
Correct.
Okay. If you would go to our website, Bill, sit under. Look at her, go to the clintonten.net, under codes enforcement, there is a procedure that council passed a couple of months ago that residents have to initiate this procedure. It explains it. It'll give you a contact person, which is Preston Stokes with our codes and buildings office.
Okay.
If you'll just look at online, it's pretty self-explanatory on the steps you have to take to do it. We actually had our first one, which was Yarnell Road completed about two weeks ago. So that's the first one we've had initiated through the new procedure. Basically, you have to take a petition around and get, how many, seventy-five? Yeah, we'll define the neighborhood that's affected.
And there have to be seventy-five percent of the owners in the, in the defined neighborhood that express interest in traffic calming and that's returned.
So if you'll just look at that, if you have any questions, you can call Preston. It's got his name and number, but it pretty well spells it out.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, they can give you some help. Since I don't see the mayor, I don't assume we're getting communications from him.
You got anything you want to say?
You got anything you want to say?
You the mayor, you the mayor, you say what you want to. We'd like to hear it.
I tried to stand up.
He said I wanted to get in the paper.
I don't want to give the paper. Committee reports, Ms. Johnson, it's good to see you back, hope you're doing well and certainly good to have your report.
Thank you, thank you, it's good to be here. It's good to have an ending, get to another school year. It's been a great twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We moved our graduation to the community center, so many thanks to Roger and JB for hosting all of our sixth graders and it ended up being a great event and it was another way to showcase the partnership between the city and the city schools, but lots of good feedback from parents and community members about the spaciousness of it and just how everything went. So many thanks to you all for your partnership in that. We are actively registering for next school year. Believe it or not, summertime is probably our busiest time in the school year because we're closing out one school year and trying to get ready for another one. So we will be have central office open each and every day during the weekday and parents can come and register their child if they have not done so. Right now, we are busy looking at initial TCAP data to determine our third and fourth grade pathways for promotion. It's still too early for me to give percentages and exact numbers because we're working with parents on appeals and working with parents on different pathways for their child to be promoted. But once again, I think we fared very well when we take into consideration how the state has done as a whole. So the TCAP data will roll in as the summer goes on, so we won't really have any initial data till probably late June, early July, so we'll have more information for you there. And then one final thing that we need to correct is we brought to you last month that we had purchased the house right beside North Clinton Elementary School on Beet Street and we gave an incorrect amount that you all approved. And so while I would love for the city to give us an extra hundred thousand dollars, I don't think that that is what you intended for us to do, so I need to make a correction and redact last month's figure that we gave you, otherwise Scott Ray gave you. He said that we bought the house for three hundred and ninety thousand and one dollar. We bought the house for two hundred ninety thousand and one dollar. And so we need to vote on that official amount. Unless you just feel so loving and forgiving, you would like to write Clinton City Schools a hundred thousand dollar check and if that's the case, then we'll gladly accept that as well.
Okay, I guess we need to make a motion to.
This is just a correction for the minutes to make sure we have.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, the motion is to rescind the previous amount and move it to two hundred ninety thousand and one dollar for the purchase.
Correct, that is correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And the closing on that, just to keep you updated, the closing has been delayed. There's been a few bumps in the road with probate court and some other things that have to happen. So we don't have an official closing date on that yet, but everything is moving and we appreciate the city working with us to purchase that on our behalf. Any questions for me?
I think, Kelly, I think the graduation site was really good. Like you said, I was, there were some of us in attendance there, it was really, it was really good. Plenty of room, it looks like we have plenty of room.
This is the first one that I wasn't able to attend, but I did watch it live stream and I'm not going to lie, I cried like a big fat baby the whole way through. So it just, it was still, you know, we wondered how the gymnasium was going to be like aesthetically and, but we contracted with Joe Parrock, which is an audio visual guy and he just did a remarkable job with some curtains and some sound and some different things to try to, you know, make it look like a professional setting. So we were very pleased with the way it worked out.
And to take up for Scott, Scott only come here and said what he was told, so I think that figure might have been right. I'm always saying he got it from somebody.
I told him if he had to make a mistake, at least he made it in the hundred thousands place value. So at least it worked to our favor, but we figured we better correct that.
Good to see you back too.
Now the numbers, man.
Maybe the quickest hundred thousand dollars I've ever lost. You should have in your board packet, budget amendment number seven. Basically, in the general purpose school fund, we have to manage certain pre-K program requirements. This money in the budget amendment takes care of that. In the cafeteria fund, we got something called the supply chain disruption grant and just recognizing that revenue and increasing some other charges, mainly bank fees. But that's all I have for you and I'd be happy to answer any questions on budget amendment number seven.
I like a motion for budget amendment number seven.
Motion, do I hear, do I hear seven?
Second.
I guess we'll need a roll call on that. Let's have the roll call on that.
Councilman Queen.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilwoman Maynard.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I guess I've got the next one, that's the regional planning commission. We had a light agenda. First of all, the Board of Zoning and Appeals, Patsy Shelton requesting a variance from section six-one of the zoning ordinance to reduce her lot width at building setback from seventy-five feet to seventy-two feet for property located at one oh-four East Mare Avenue. This was the only way she could fit a house on there and so we didn't feel like a three-foot variance would hinder any problem, any situation there, so that was approved. And then the planning commission, three items on the consent agenda and what the consent agenda is, is if these are usually property lines being moved or something like that and that is usually handled through the codes enforcement officer. I can go over them if you wish, but all three of them are listed there and they were, they were approved through the codes enforcement. And then new business, we did discuss what we were looking at, some of the things we wish codes enforcement would look at in the future. So if you have any ideas, you may want to pass them on to codes enforcement. I can tell you, there were two things in particular that we asked them to look into and that is continuing to monitor tiny houses and a big one, Airbnbs. We're told Airbnb's, those that are already here, we can't do anything about their grandfather, but we can do something about the new ones. We can, we can pass some zoning things that may kind of restrict Airbnb's. They're looking into that, so we'll hopefully find that out.
One thing that I would talk, like to be looked at, and I don't know if there's anything we can do. I know up at Ace Hardware there, at that vacant lot where they had that equipment, there's tractor and trailer trailers there.
I saw that.
That have straw and things in them and if that's going to be there, if that's not aesthetically, that does not look very good. Now, how do you handle straw in an aesthetically pleasing way? I don't know. But if we have fences and barriers up at junkyards and up at wrecker impound lots, I mean, there needs to be some kind of barrier there. So I don't know, I know those, I'm sympathetic to retail. I don't want to, I don't want to throw them under the bus from that standpoint, but from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it would be nice to look at things like that. It still bothers me that Dollar General and some of these other places have their dumpsters out beside their building, not behind their building. So, but that's the only thing I would.
I'll pass that on to codes enforcement.
All right.
Do we have any say on the dumpsters, where they go? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
Do we have any say where the dumpsters go?
There was one out on the right of way and I think they got that one moved, Highway twenty-five, but.
For the newer developments, they have to be shown on the site plan and they're always enclosed and screened, but for older locations, we really don't have that much regulation.
And another thing that happens is enclosed and screened, sometimes they're not enclosed. The gates are there and the gates are open and I know I'm getting petty, but it doesn't do any good. I mean, so can, is that an enforceable type thing? I mean.
Possibly.
And I know there's a lot other bigger fish to fry than saying, oh, your gate's open on your dumpster. But if it's in a.
It's probably something the codes enforcement would stop by and visit.
Yeah, if it's in a nice area, a well-traveled area, it's the little things, and we all know this, it's the little things that make the difference.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. While I've got the floor, let me just remind everybody, we are having the concerts on the hill. Those generally go really well. If you want to have some fun and listen to some good music, Green Macadoo is continuing this summer to have the concerts on the hill. Great time, it's basically free, they pass the hat, usually there's a food truck there or something. It's a great experience if you've never been up there. Good Saturday night entertainment. Councilman McBride, CUB.
Okay, you have the CUB report in your packet there. There's also a couple of letters and I'm probably going to rely on Chris and Roger to help me a little bit. It had to do, CUB received a letter from the state comptroller's office about retirement and how it was reported. And basically, CUB is saying it was reported accurately. The comptroller initially said it wasn't, CUB replied, said it was, then the comptroller back, came back and said, yeah, you're right, it was reported accurately. Is that?
Correct. So after the audit is finished, the state comptroller takes a look at our audit and decides whether or not it was done in compliance with GASP and GAAP and all that good stuff. And initially, the comptroller looked at the, their retirement plan a certain way and opined that it wasn't done properly in a couple of areas. And then our auditors got back and said, no, we don't agree with that, here's why. And then the state comptroller looked at it and said, you're right, sorry about that. So here's another set of letters that say, sorry, we were, we were not correct in our first opinion. So at the end of the day, even if they hadn't given us a second set of letters, it was just, hey, we don't agree with the way you're, you're doing that and we would have had an opportunity, or CUB would have had an opportunity to make some changes, but in the end, we're, we're in compliance and doing things the right way either way.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman McBride?
No, sir.
City Manager Hock.
Vice Mayor, while we're speaking on the comptroller, we also received a couple of letters on a couple of things and I know one of them was just a clerical area, it was the canine dog that we bought like on June twenty-eighth for seventy-six hundred dollars. We actually had to purchase it in advance, we didn't pick it up for three or four weeks later. That money didn't get, that seventy-six hundred dollars didn't get amended into last year's budget. So that was one of the findings. And the second one was another transfer of funds and I know our financial consultant, Ms. Cook and Pew and Company, our auditors disagree with that, so they're working on an appeal to that one too. So seeing those letters, that's kind of what those were. Traffic calming, I didn't spoke on that, we did have our first petition for Yarnell Road, they received seventy-five percent, so that kicked it into the next stage of actual traffic study being done and that'll move forward with the whole procedure. Like I said, all that's listed on our website now, so citizens can see it.
Can you sketch that, how that works?
Or, I don't know if I can out of memory. If a citizen, as we just had, decides that they, their neighborhood would like to have it, they would, they would first come to staff. Staff has to define what the neighborhood is, what the area is going to be affected. It could be rather large, could be small, Yarnell Road was rather large. Once we define that, then it's up to the people requesting. They have to go door to door, however they assume, and get a petition. Bill's gave me the whole thing here. They have to get the petition, have to get seventy-five percent of the affected area to agree that they want the traffic calming device. It may not be a speed hump, it could be something else, so several different, as we did on Ridgeview, there are several different deterrents that you can use. So once they get seventy-five signatures, they bring it back to city hall, we have a staff person assigned to that. They will verify everything, then we ask our traffic engineers to do a traffic study with recommendations. Once that comes back, the petitioner will get a town hall meeting of the affected neighborhood. We'll let them have it here at the community center. Everything's explained to them, this is what we found, this is what our traffic engineers recommend. They have to go back out and get fifty percent, I'm trying not to read off this, fifty percent of the neighborhood to agree that they want this, whether it be speed humps, stop signs, lanes narrowed, whatever feature that the traffic engineer comes up with, fifty percent of the neighborhood has to agree that they want that installed. Once that happens, then we'll install it. Now, we've limited that just due to budget number to about four, four traffic calming devices a year, so otherwise, we'd just probably do four neighborhoods because some of it could run into some, some large sums depending on, like I said, we've looked at one that we didn't have a complaint on, but we know there's some issues. It may be some minor fixes with a couple, adding a couple of stop signs to the neighborhood. So it could be different things, but in a nutshell, that's the procedure. Got it? Okay. The Interstate County Chamber of Commerce purchased property at North Main and North Hick Street for the construction of a new building. Their plans have changed and the property now is available for sale. As city government and city schools are both out of space for expansion and continue to grow, we would therefore recommend extending an offer to purchase this property at an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With short-term plans, this will be used for a municipal parking lot. Our plans was if we buy the land now, Kelly and I have talked, it, you know, it's basically a half a block from downtown. It could be used for special events, various things for city parking, but also we think we could use it where right now, once the school year starts, we have so much traffic back up on Hick Street in the last couple of years, even on Main Street, which can be dangerous, that we could possibly use this area as a staging area. Now, one thing we've talked about is a lot of the preliminary work can be done in-house by the public works department. We can go in and grade it, get it leveled off as good as possible, even put a new. Right now, the only entrance is off Main Street. We've put another one, tried to cut one, Dwayne and I looked at it last week off of Hick Street, so there'd be an in and out. So it'd be a great staging area instead of having all these cars on Hicks. And we probably still have some on Hicks, but wouldn't let it back up on the main. The lot is about the size, it's one point, about at one point two acres, so it's about the same size as the lower parking lot off Commerce Street. So we probably could get laid out right, well over a hundred to a hundred and fifty cars in there. Down the road, as we said, Kelly's central office is out of space, we're out of space here. We had to subdivide a couple of offices not long ago up here. You know, future plans, you know, years ago, we had opportunity to buy the chiropractic building across the street in Denton. So just future planning for six, seven, eight, ten years down the road, you know, possibility of a place to expand our city facilities there. And it's within two blocks of city hall and the police and fire station and less than that than the schools. So therefore, we would recommend purchase of the property.
Make a motion?
Second.
Guess we probably ought to take a roll call, vote on this. Motion is to extend an offer to purchase the property at not more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Gina?
Councilman Queen.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilwoman Maynard.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just an FYI, I was talking about codes enforcement. The codes enforcement officer, office will be executing a previously issued chancellor court order to demolish an abandoned structure and remove personal property at eleven thirty-nine Melton Hill Circle. This work should be completed sometime in the month of June. This is a property that, what, Jeff, probably five years ago, maybe longer than that, we had a fire there. The house has got abandoned. We had a chancellor ruling several years ago, so trying to clean up some of these properties. This is probably one of three that we're going to tear down in the next six to eight weeks, but this will be the first one, just kind of FYI. We know who, I mean, have we had contact with them or anything? Does anybody know?
I haven't thought it's sold once, but I'm not sure who bought it.
I'm not sure, Councilman, I'm sure they have, but I'm not sure. I just reported, we knew who it was. Just another FYI, Carden Farm property donation. We have recently received a significant donation of property in the Carden Farm Industrial Park for the future expansion of the Carden Farm Passive Park, Dog Park. This six-point-four-nine-two acre parcel is at the dead end of Carden Farm Drive. It's valued at three hundred and ninety thousand dollars and was gifted to the city by former mayor Kathy Brown. The property does have restrictions for future development, it can only be used for recreation, parks and education, which we have on several of our properties. One thing, I talked to mayor, former mayor Brown about, I guess it was last week. This is just under the trussel to the current park. We hope we can regain, we used to have an easement that would allow us to go under the trussel with the road when we first built Carden Farm Industrial Park back in the late eighties. So we're going to at some point revisit with the railroad to get a pedestrian easement there to connect the two properties. But we, besides probably sometime this spring, doing some clearing of underbrush, we don't want to go in there and clear all the trees out by any means, just some of the underbrush. We don't want to do a whole lot to the property and I verified this with the state. Next year's grant cycle, we can use the value of the property of the land as a match for an LPRF, LWCF grant. So we could actually apply for a, my math, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar project and get half of that, three hundred and ninety, from the state and our match would only be the value of the property. So we wouldn't have to put any, any money up and that, that three hundred and ninety would be to develop the rest of that park. So we don't, going to just kind of hang on to it till next, next spring.
Great, great donation.
Yes.
Anything else?
Sure, that's it. Finance report, refer to Chris, I forgot him.
I almost got away with it.
Thank you, Roger.
We're, as of this report, we're ten out of twelve months through the fiscal year, which is eighty-three percent of that. We've collected ninety-three percent of the projected revenues. We spent a hundred and seven percent of our original budget, but we all understand what we've done in capital this year. So you'll be seeing a final budget amendment coming from me, probably at the July meeting, to clear up everything we've done that you all have approved for June. Switching over to the local option. Had a good month. We collected nearly four hundred and seventy thousand, which was, actually, last year we collected four sixty-five, so it wasn't a huge increase over the same month last year, but as months go, it was a very good month overall. So we're, we're at four point one in local option sales tax for this fiscal year. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Any questions on the finances?
Vice Mayor, that's all I have. I have a question. As I was sitting at the house, I missed last month's council meeting, I was sitting in the house recovering from a little surgery, some people have talked about Lakefront Park. And I sort of took an interest in it a little bit and I go by, I went by every night last week just about and it seems like there. How many girls do we have playing softball down there? Is anybody, I think you told me around two something? If you, if you look at our rec league, of course, middle school, high school uses it with all the girls playing down there. We had probably close to or over two hundred participating this year. So we've got over two hundred young ladies playing softball there and not only playing softball there, they're playing at the field beside the community center too. We've got all the parking full down there. I looked at all the pickleball courts, all the pickleball courts were full. I think somebody was playing tennis that night. Basketball was going, the splash pad wasn't open, but I look at the splash pad today and it's completely packed today. I don't know how, I couldn't sit here as a councilman where I invoked to turn that into just green space. In my opinion, we need more of that. So I don't know how we can get, I don't know how anybody says we can get, we need to get rid of Lakefront Park when that's going on. First of all, let me ask you this, if we did do away with it, where would we put the two hundred kids? Well, you know, for our rec league, we have nowhere. You know, the high school is building a field over there, but it's going to be limited use for the high school and, you know, and the middle school is actually even addressed the concern because right now, we let them use the field next to the community center. It's easier for them to walk over there and use that than having to transport eleven and twelve-year-olds to the high school. So they've showed an interest in, in, uh, working with the city to still use the field next to the center. But with the rec leagues, I mean, we had over three hundred and fifty in baseball, so.
But with the rec leagues, I mean, we had over 350 in baseball, so the three fields at J.C. Park are completely utilized, so we would, there's really nowhere to put them at this point. And there's really no land in the city that big, that I know of, that you could put them. And of course, you say, well, we just had six acres donated to us, J.C. or South Clinton, but you know, we've kind of kept that property as we did the Dog Park. We want it more of a passive park in town, because we really didn't have that, and you know, that's kind of what a few people have suggested, a passive park there. Well, we're essentially going to have almost 24, almost 25 acres just across the river, on the river, all of it's on the river as a passive park, but so...
A great place for, not only that, you go to J.C. Park, all the fields up there, it's packed. Folks, it's packed, so I just don't see how we could...
That's also a point where they need another field.
That's what I'm saying, so I don't see how we could deny 200 young ladies playing softball, and we just spend all the money to do the pickle court, and to redo the tennis court down there, and we got a splash pad down there, I just don't, I just don't see that. I'm sorry, I just don't think it's an area that we, if we do anything, we improve it.
Yeah.
We don't take away from it, we improve it.
And a couple other factors a lot of people don't know. One is, is half of Lakefront Park, if you split the girl softball field towards the boathouse, everything to the left of that is TVA property that I worked on back in the early 90s to get a permanent recreation easement on that property, that we're the permanent land manager, so there's certain things we can and cannot do on that property. But the whole park was developed in the mid 70s under an LWCF grant. And there is definitely, anytime you do these state and federal grants, use of limitations on what you can do, so if you changed it from one activity to the other, they would, and I verified this with the state last year when it came up a year and a half ago, we would probably have to file for a amendment to that for the change of use of it. It'd be a conversion on the change of use of the park from athletic field. It could, I know I've done it one other time. Me and Bill did back in the early 90s on a piece of property at J.C. Park, the corner that had got cut out when they built Christian Drive, and it took us two years, Bill, on just a very small piece of property. I'm talking the corner of Christian Drive got cut out of J.C. Park, and the state realized that on another grant, when I turned in a property map, and we had lost a half acre to the park, they wanted to know where it was. So we had to do the conversion, and we actually had to set another piece of property aside in the city to make up for that piece that we converted. So it's a lengthy process, so it's not as easy as it sounds.
I just think we've got something good going on down there right now, and you mentioned the Dog Park. I had, and I told you this earlier, and I'll say it again in front of the whole council, I had a businessman that's from, that has a business here in town, but he's from Knoxville, and he told me that he's been to some Dog Parks in bigger cities. And he said, I'll tell you, Clinton has the nicest Dog Park, and it's the biggest I've ever seen. So that's a compliment right there, just when it says, if we have a nice Dog Park, and I, if you've not seen it, you need to go see it, because I hadn't really seen it until the other day, and I went and seen it, it's a nice place.
Oh, it is, and we had, I guess it was the last weekend of April, we had the Humane Society done their third annual event there, and we, it's grown every year. Joe Hollensworth and his wife helped put it on, which Joe's always been a big supporter of everything in Clinton, but this year, it grew to over 70 vendors. And will probably continue growing, and it's a great event for the Humane Society and...
And the tennis courts look good at J.C. Park, too.
And when you said that, I had a guy tell me the day the pickleball courts, they were having to take numbers to be able to get on, and they were backed up to using them.
The other night, they were, everyone in Houston, there was no parking. I don't know where people were parking, because even the boat parking that we did, and everybody, we did extra down there for the boat crews, they were parked over there. So there's a good thing going on down there, keep going.
Thank you, Councilman.
And do we have an update for the pool, like on that?
It, they are, the last update we got, they hope to be done with a splash pad sometime in July, and the pool to follow, it just, we, as we said before, we ran into some issues. Public Works worked up there for about three weeks installing new water and sewer lines. So right now, it's turned back over, they're waiting on final approval from the Health Department on the pool, but they should be. The equipment was ordered back in December, January for the splash pad. We knew it was a five to six-month timeframe getting it in, so they're expecting that in any time, and hopefully move forward on it. The inside of the building is completely being gutted, they started putting plumbing in, pouring concrete, start putting it back together about a week ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, City Manager? Thank you, Roger.
That's all I have.
Ordinances and resolutions, have the first reading of the ordinances, ordinance number 690, fiscal year 2024-25 budget. Roger, I guess that's you or...
Chris can help me if I mess up here. Just kind of the highlights of the budget. Once again, we presented a budget with revenues and expenditures balanced, it's a balanced budget. We've kept property tax the same, this is at 86 cents per $100 excess value. And once again, for a city our size, that's one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Tennessee. Miskulanius revenues, we have increased various revenues based on historical collection, that sales tax and some of those things, we've increased them kind of as things grow. We typically don't increase them a lot, and we didn't this year, we try to stay very conservative, but we did make some adjustments there this year. Payroll, we have recommended, again, this year, a 6% across-the-board pay increase. That's cost of living, and that's also to go with the new pay plan that you all approved last March, April, I think, of last year. We did 8% last year, 6% this year, and hope to be able to do something really good again next year, because our goal with that new pay plan was to improve all employees' salary by 20% in a two-to-three-year cycle, and we're on track to do that, so that's good. And we've made some various adjustments throughout this fiscal year, as we had people training and promotion, so you know, we're trying to get up there and stay competitive with our surrounding, you know, departments. I know City of Knoxville did a rather large one this year for their police department, which is good for them, you know, I try, and Chief and I talk about it, you know, thank God, patrolling streets in Clinton, hopefully it's not as dangerous as patrolling streets in Knoxville, but you know, we're still trying to get our starting salary and our experienced guys up there in all departments. We did convert, well, employee health insurance, we did recommend still 100% paying of it, we did a 10% increase. We won't actually have those numbers until about October, November, but that's, we don't anticipate anything over 10%. Converted one part-time dispatcher into a full-time dispatcher. We maintain our TCRS contribution at 7%, which is about a little over half of what they recommended, but that just helps us in the days that we can't make that, we have that fund built up. We also converted a part-time fire department personnel into a full-time, which for the first time, July 1, when we hired this other one. Last year, we added one, we added another one during this year due to some funds. We will now have nine firemen per shift, that's the first time ever, I think, I think back in 2010, 2011, I think we had five or six per shift, so we almost doubled our personnel in the fire department. Miskulanius items, of course, we've added $15,000 for the administrative hearing officer. That first hearing will be set, I think it's the second, or no...
Fourth Thursday?
First, fourth, I think it's the fourth Thursday of July will be our first administrative hearing, so we put $15,000 in the budget for the hearing officer. We did increase training both for police and fire, not a whole lot, but about $3,000, helped them out a little bit. We had a request from the Main Street USA program for a $10,000 additional contribution. There, we'd had an original three-year commitment of $25,000 a year, that commitment's up this year, so it would be a new commitment. They did ask for $10,000 more, right now, we have that in the budget. And we did add $5,000 to Public Works for the traffic calming that we may be experiencing. Questions?
If there's an administrative officer, like if there's an issue, does codes go strictly straight to that, or do they come before us, and we recommend that it goes to the...
It goes straight to them.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll go with...
A quicker process.
Right, it, and most, the stuff that'll go to the administrative hearing officer, the city, and we had this discussion today in city court, we had an issue come up, and they asked me to step in. You know, the city court is still going to hear traffic violations, most of that stuff. The administrative hearing officer will mainly deal with property maintenance, environmental concerns, that type of issues. Everything else will still fall into the city court. I won't say the administrative officer has more power than the city judge, but he can, in violation cases, fine the violator more than the city judge can. You know, cases come up, we went down, several of us, and watched Oak Ridge's administrative hearing last Wednesday, and the administrative hearing officer there fined a property owner $500 for a violation, but he explained to the property owner that this was rental property, and rental property is considered commercial property, and by state law, he could have fined this individual $500 a day for the violation on commercial property. So a little more teeth, you know, my experience with this council and our previous councils is that property maintenance has always been a big issue, and with going with the new administrative hearing officer, we're going to do property maintenance guidelines that we passed on second reading last month, it's going to give the codes department, and Matt Wyner's doing a super job there, a lot more teeth to be able to get violators in compliance, and it's not our goal to collect money, it's our goal to get them in compliance.
Clean it up.
Clean it up.
That's, we did a lot of discussion about that, and it is, it's really going to be a benefit to the city, I really think so. Seeing no other, I guess we need to vote on that.
I wanted to make a comment, but let's get a motion in a second.
Yeah, get a motion first, yeah.
Yeah, here a motion. I'm back a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, Councilman McBride?
The Main Street contribution, I am for, I'm good with this. I would like maybe to know more about how the Main Street board works. I know, like, we used to give money to the chamber, and there's somebody on the board from the chamber, there's probably somebody on this board. I think boards, you need to be careful, I think they need to be on a rotating basis, three-year, five-year terms, and then rotate around, but is it out of place to ask you and the mayor to maybe go forward and talk with the Main Street folks? And as the city gives more money, we need to have more accountability from the city, but I'm for it, I'm all good. But let's, I guess we're putting our money there, we need to put our nose there a little bit, maybe.
Mayor Burton had the conversation with me last week, which unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, and that would have been my recommendation that, you know, we go ahead and pass it on first reading, which we still got second reading for everything's final, but that if council so wishes, Mayor Burton and I can sit down with Catherine and discuss the makeup of the board and the makeup for we, because we really probably need to renew it.
Yes, I'm all for it.
And because we had the document, we probably need to do it.
The $10,000, I'm fine with that, too, I mean, the increase and...
And we can discuss that and report back to council on...
Here's how the format's going to be.
I have no problem with that.
Good.
But you've, we have a motion, second, on first, first reading of the FY 24-25 budget.
Roll call.
Let's do a roll call, Gina.
Councilman Quiner.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Woman Mina.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
First reading, the budget 24-25 is approved. Seeing no other ordinances or resolutions, any old business, any new business. Here a motion, do a adjournment?
Second.
Good job, I swear to God.
They had that equipment, there was tractor and trailer trailers there.
I saw that.
That have straw and things in them, and if that's gonna be there, if that's not, aesthetically, that does not look very good. Now, how do you handle straw in an aesthetically pleasing way? I don't know, but if we have fences and barriers up at junkyards and up at wrecker impound lots, I mean, there needs to be some kind of barrier there. So, I don't know, I know those, I'm sympathetic to retail. I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw 'em under the bus from that standpoint, but from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it would be nice to look at things like that. It still bothers me that Dollar General, some of these other places have their dumpsters out beside their building, not behind their building. So, but that's the only thing I would.
I'll pass that on to Code Enforcement.
Aight.
Do we have any say on the dumpsters where they go? Does anybody know?
I don't know, do we?
Do we have any say where the dumpsters go?
There was one out on the right of way, and I think they got that one moved, um, Highway twenty-five, but...
For the nearer developments, they have to be shown on the site plan, and they're always enclosed and screened. But for older locations, we really don't have that much regulation.
And another thing that happens is enclosed and screened, sometimes they're not enclosed. The gates are there, and the gates are open, and I know I'm getting petty, but it doesn't do any good. I mean, so can, is that an enforceable type thing? I mean...
Possibly.
And I know there's a lot other bigger fish to fry than saying, oh, your gate's open on your dumpster. But if it's in a...
It's probably something the Code's enforcement should stop by and visit.
Yeah, if it's in a nice area, a well-traveled area, it's the little things, and we all know this. It's the little things that make the difference.
Thank you, Councilman McBrigh. While I've got the floor, let me just remind everybody, we are having the concerts on the hill. Those generally go really well. If you wanna have some fun and listen to some good music, Green McAdoo is continuing this summer to have the concerts on the hill. Great time. It's basically free. They passed the hat. Usually, there's a food truck there or something. It's a great experience if you've never been up there. Good Saturday night entertainment. Councilman McBrigh, CUB?
Okay, you have the CUB report in your packet there. There's also a couple of letters, and I'm probably gonna rely on Chris and Roger to help me a little bit. It had to do, CUB received a letter from the State Comptroller's Office about retirement and how it was reported. And basically, CUB is saying it was reported accurately. The comptroller initially said it wasn't. CUB replied, said it was. Then the comptroller back, came back and said, yeah, you're right, it was reported accurately.
Correct. So, after the audit is finished, the State Comptroller takes a look at our audit and decides whether or not it was done in compliance with GASP and GAAP and all that good stuff. And initially, the comptroller looked at the, their retirement plan a certain way and opined that it wasn't done properly in a couple of areas. And then our auditors got back and said, no, we don't agree with that, here's why. And then the State Comptroller looked at it and said, you're right, sorry about that. So, here's another set of letters that say, sorry, we were, we were not correct in our first opinion. So, at the end of the day, even if they hadn't given us a second set of letters, it was just, hey, we don't agree with the way you're, you're doing that, and we would've had an opportunity, or CUB would've had an opportunity to make some changes, but in the end, we're, we're in compliance and doing things the right way either way.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman McBrigh?
No.
City Manager Houck?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. While we're speaking on the comptroller, we also received a, a couple of letters on a couple of things, and I know one of them was just a clerical area. It was the K-9 dog that we bought like on June twenty-eighth for seventy-six hundred dollars. We actually had to purchase it in advance. We didn't pick it up for three or four weeks later. That money didn't get, that seventy-six hundred dollars didn't get amended into last year's budget. So, that was one of the findings. And the second one was another transfer of funds. And I know our financial consultant, Miss Cook, and Pugh and Company, our auditors disagree with that, so they're working on an appeal to that one, too. So, seeing those letters, that's kinda what those were. Traffic comment, I didn't spoke on that. We did have our first petition for Yarnell Road. They received seventy-five percent, so that kicked it into the next stage of actual, um, traffic study being done. And that'll move forward with the whole procedure. Like I said, all that's listed on our website now, so citizens can see it.
Can you thumbnail sketch that, how that works?
Or, I don't know if I can out of memory. If a citizen, as we just had, decides that they, their neighborhood would like to have it, they would, they would first come to staff. Staff has to define what the neighborhood is, what, what the area is gonna be affected. It could be rather large, it could be small. Yarnell Road was, was rather large. Once we define that, then it's up to the, the people requesting, they have to go door-to-door, however they assume, and get a petition. Bill's gave me the whole thing here. They have to get the petition, have to get seventy-five percent of the affected area to agree that they want the traffic calming device. It may not be a speed hump, it could be something else. So, several different, as we did on Ridgeview, there's several different deterrents that you can use. So, once they get seventy-five signatures, they bring it back to City Hall. We have a staff person assigned to that. They, they will verify everything. Then we ask our traffic engineers to do a traffic study with recommendations. Once that comes back, the, the petitioner will, will get a town hall meeting of the affected neighborhood. We'll let them have it here, the community center. Everything's explained to them. This is what we found. This is what our traffic engineers recommend. They have to go back out and get fifty percent, I'm trying not to read off this, fifty percent of the neighborhood to agree that they want this, whether it be speed humps, stop signs, lanes narrowed, whatever, whatever feature that the traffic engineer comes up with. Fifty percent of the neighborhood has to agree that they want that installed. Once that happens, then we'll install it. Now, we've limited that, just due to a budget number, to about four, uh, four traffic calming devices a year. So, otherwise, we'd just probably do four neighborhoods, 'cause some of it could run into some, some large sums, depending on, like I said, we've, we've looked at one that we didn't have a complaint on, but we know there's some issues. It may be some minor fixes with a couple, adding a couple of stop signs to the neighborhood. So, it could be different things. But in a nutshell, that's the procedure. Got it? Okay. The Interstate County Chamber of Commerce purchased property at North Main and North Hick Street for the construction of a new building. Their plans have changed, and the property now is available for sale. As city government and city schools are both out of space for expansion and continue to grow, we would therefore recommend extending an offer to purchase this property at an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With short-term plans, this will be used for a municipal parking lot. Our plans was if we buy, buy the land, now Kelly and I have talked, it, you know, it's, it's basically a half a block from downtown. It could be used for special events, various things for city parking, but also, we think we could use it where right now, once the school year starts, we have so much traffic back up on Hick Street, in the last couple of years even on Main Street, which can be dangerous, that we could possibly use this area as a staging area. Now, one thing we've talked about is, is a lot of the preliminary work can be done in-house by the Public Works Department. We can go in and grade it, get it leveled off as good as possible, even put a new, right now, the only entrance is off Main Street. We'd put another one, try to cut one, Dwayne and I looked at it last week, off of Hick Street, so there'd be an in and out. So, it'd be a great staging area instead of having all these, these cars on Hicks. And we'd probably still have some on Hicks, but wouldn't let it back up on the main. The lot is about the size, it's one point, about at one point two acres. So, it's about the same size as the lower parking lot off Commerce Street. So, we, we probably could get laid out right, well over a hundred to a hundred and fifty cars in there. Down the road, as we said, Kelly's central office is out of space. We're out of space here. We had to subdivide a couple offices not long ago up here. You know, future plans, you know, years ago, we had opportunity to buy the, the chiropractic building across the street and didn't. So, just future, future planning for six, seven, eight, ten years down the road, you know, possibility of, of a place to expand our city facilities there. And it's within two blocks of City Hall and the police and fire station, and less than that than the schools. So, therefore, we would recommend purchase of the property.
Make a motion?
Second.
Guess we probably oughta take a roll call vote on this.
Yes.
Motion is to extend an offer to purchase the property at not more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Gina?
Councilman Quinnor?
Yes.
Councilman McBrigh?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Vice Mayor Dan?
Yes.
Councilman Houck, Mayor, Councilwoman woman Maynard?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just an FYI, I was talking about Code Enforcement. The Code Enforcement officer, office will be executing a previously issued Chancery Court order to demolish an abandoned structure and remove personal property at eleven thirty-nine Melton Hill Circle. This work should be completed sometime in the month of June. This is a property that, what, Jeff? Probably five years ago, maybe longer than that. We had a fire there. The house has got abandoned. We had a chance for a ruling several years ago, so trying to, to clean up some of these properties. This is probably one of three that we're gonna tear down in the next six to eight weeks. But this will be the first one, just kinda FYI.
We know who, I mean, have we had contact with them, or do you think? Do you mind noting?
I thought it sold once, but I'm not sure who it was.
I'm not sure, Councilman. I'm, I'm sure they have, but I'm not sure.
I just wondered if we knew who it was.
Just another FYI, Carden Farm Property Donation. We have recently received a significant donation of property in the Carden Farm Industrial Park for the future expansion of the Carden Farm Passive Park, Dog Park. This six-point-four-nine-two acre parcel is at the dead end of Carden Farm Drive. It's valued at three hundred and ninety thousand dollars and was gifted to the city by former mayor Kathy Brown. The property does have restrictions for future development. It can only be used for recreation, parks, and education, which we have on several of our properties. One thing I talked to Mayor, former Mayor Brown about, I guess it was last week. This is just under the trussel to the current park. We hope we can regain, we used to have an easement that would allow us to go under the trussel with the road when we first built Carden Farm Industrial Park back in the late eighties. So, we're gonna, at some point, revisit with the railroad to get a pedestrian easement there to connect the two properties. But we, besides probably sometime this spring, doing some clearing of underbrush, we don't wanna go in there and clear all the trees out by any means, just some of the underbrush. We don't wanna do a whole lot to the property, and I verified this with the state. Next year's grant cycle, we can use the value of the property of the land as a match for an LPRF, LWCF grant. So, we could actually apply for a, my math, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar project and get half of that three hundred and ninety from the state, and our, our match would only be the, the value of the property. So, we wouldn't have to put any, any money up, and that, that three hundred and ninety would be to develop the rest of that park. So, we don't kinda, just kinda hang on to it till next, next spring.
Great, great donation.
Yes.
Anything else?
Um, let's see it. Finance report, refer to Chris, I forgot him.
I almost got away with it. Thank you, Roger. We're, as of this report, we're ten out of twelve months through the fiscal year, which is eighty-three percent of that. We've collected ninety-three percent of the projected revenues. We spent a hundred and seven percent of our original budget, but we all understand what we've done in capital this year. So, you'll be seeing a, a final budget amendment come from me, probably at the July meeting, to, to clear up everything we've done that you all have approved for June. Switching over to the local option, had a good month. We collected nearly four hundred and seventy thousand, which was, actually, last year, we collected four sixty-five, so it wasn't a huge increase over the same month last year, but as months go, it was a very good month overall. So, we're, we're at four point one in local option sales tax for this fiscal year. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Any questions on the, on this?
Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
I have a question. As I was sitting at the house, I missed last month's council meeting. I was sitting in the house recovering from a little surgery. Some people have talked about Lakefront Park. And I sort of took an interest in it a little bit, and I go by, I went by every night last week, just about, and it seems like there, how many girls do we have playing softball down there? Is anybody? I think you told me around two something?
If you, if you look at our rec league, of course, middle school, high school uses it. With, with all the girls playing down there, we had probably close to or over two hundred participating this year.
So, we've got over two hundred young ladies playing softball there. Not only playing softball there, they're playing at the field beside the community center, too. We've got all the parking full down there. I looked at all the pickleball courts. All the pickleball courts were full. I think somebody was playing tennis that night. Basketball was going, the splash pad went open. But I look at the splash pad today, and it's completely packed today. I don't know how, I couldn't sit here as a councilman, where I'm invoked, to turn that into just green space. In my opinion, we need more of that. So, I don't know how we can get, I don't know how anybody says we can get, we need to get rid of Lakefront Park when that's going on. First of all, let me ask you this. If we did do away with it, where would we put the two hundred kids?
Well, you know, for our rec league, we have nowhere. You know, the high school is building a field over there, but it's gonna be limited use for the high school, and, you know, and the middle school's actually even addressed the concern, because right now, we let them use the field next to the community center. It's easier for them to walk over there and use that than having to, to transport eleven and twelve-year-olds to the high schools. So, they, they've showed an interest in, in, uh, working with the city to still use the field next to the center. But, but with the rec leagues, I mean, we had over three hundred and fifty in baseball, so, so the, the three fields at J.C. Park are completely utilized. So, we would, there, there's really nowhere to put them at this point, and there's really no land in the city that big that I know of that, that you could put them. And of course, you say, well, we just had six acres donated to us, J.C. or South Clinton, but, you know, we've kinda kept that property as, as we did the Dog Park. We wanted more of a passive park in town, 'cause we really didn't have that, and, and, you know, that's kinda what a few people suggested, a passive park there. Well, we're essentially gonna have almost twenty-four, almost twenty-five acres just across the river, on the river, all of it's on the river as a passive park, but so...
Great place for, not only that, you go to J.C. Park, all the fields up there, it's packed. Folks, it's packed, so I, I just don't see how we could...
It's also a point where they need a field.
That's what I'm saying. So, I don't see how we could deny two hundred young ladies playing softball, and we just spent all the money to do the pickle court and to redo the tennis court down there, and we got a splash pad down there. I, I just don't, I just don't see that. I'm sorry. I just don't think it's an area that we, if we do anything, we improve it.
Yeah.
We don't take away from it, we improve it.
And a couple other factors a lot of people don't, don't know. One is, is half of Lakefront Park, if you split the girl softball field towards the, the boathouse, everything to the left of that is, is TVA property that I worked on back in the early nineties to, to get a permanent recreation easement on that property, that we're the permanent land manager. So, there's, there's certain things we can and cannot do on that property. But the, the whole park was developed in the mid-seventies under an LWCF grant, and there is definitely, anytime you do these, these state and federal grants, use of limitations on what you can do. So, if you changed it from one activity to the other, that, that would, and I verified this with the state last year when it came up a year and a half ago, we would probably have to file for a, a, an amendment to that for the change of use of it. It'd be a conversion on the change of use of the park from...
And that might not happen.
It, it could. I know I've done it one other time. Me and Bill did back in the early nineties on a piece of property at J.C. Park, the corner that had got cut out when they built Christian Drive. And it took us two years, Bill, on just a very small piece of property. I'm talking, the corner of Christian Drive got cut out of J.C. Park, and the, the state realized that on another grant when I turned in a property map, and we had lost a half acre to the park. They wanted to know where it was. So, we had to do the conversion, and we actually had to set another piece of property aside in the city to make up for that piece that we, we converted. So, it's, it's a lengthy process. So, it's not as easy as it sounds.
I, I just think we got something good going on down there right now. And you mentioned the Dog Park. I, I had, and I told you this earlier, and I'll say it again in front of the whole council. I had a businessman that's from, that has a business here in town, but he's from Knoxville. And he told me that he's been to some Dog Parks in bigger cities. And he said, I'll tell you, Clinton has the nicest Dog Park, and it's the biggest I've ever seen. So, that's a compliment right there, just when it says, if we have a nice Dog Park, and I, if you've not seen it, you need to go see it, 'cause I hadn't really seen it till the other day, and I went and seen it. It's a nice place.
Oh, it is. And we, and we had, I guess it was the last weekend of April, we had the Humane Society done their third annual event there, and we, it's, it's grown every year. Joe Hollinsworth and his wife helped put it on, which Joe's always been a big supporter of everything in Clinton. But this year, it grew to over seventy vendors, and will probably continue growing. And it, it's, it's a great event for the Humane Society and...
And the tennis courts look good at J.C. Park, too.
And when you said that, I had a guy tell me the other day, the pickleball courts, they were having to take numbers to be able to get on, and they were backed up to using them.
The other night, they were, everyone in Houston, there was no parking. I don't know where people were parking, 'cause they even, the boat parking that we did, and everybody, we did extra down there for the boat trunks, they were parked over there. So, there's a good thing going on down there. Keep going.
Thank you, Councilman.
And do we have an update for the pool, like, on that?
It, they are, the last update we got, they hope to be done with a splash pad sometime in July, and the pool to follow. It just, we've, as we said before, we've ran into some issues. Public Works worked up there for about three weeks installing new water and sewer lines. So, right now, it's turned back over. They're waiting on final approval from the Health Department on the pool. But they should be. The equipment was ordered back in December, January for the splash pad. We knew it was a five to six-month timeframe getting it in, so they're expecting that in any time and, and hopefully move forward on it. The inside of the building has completely been gutted. They started putting plumbing in, pouring concrete, start putting it back together about a week ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, City Manager? Thank you, Roger.
That's all I have.
Ordinances and resolutions have the first reading of new ordinances. Ordinance number six ninety, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Four Twenty-Five Budget. Roger, I guess that's you or...
Chris can help me if I mess up here. Just kinda the highlights of the budget. Once again, we, we presented a budget with revenues and expenditures balanced. It's a balanced budget. We've kept property tax the same. This is at eighty-six cents per one hundred dollar excess value. And once again, for a city our size, that's one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Tennessee. Miskulanius revenues, we have increased various revenues based on historical collection. That's sales tax and some of those things. We've increased them kinda, kinda as things grow. We typically don't increase them a lot, and we didn't this year. We try to stay very conservative, but we did make some adjustments there this year. Payroll, we have recommended, again, this year, a six percent across-the-board pay increase. That's cost of living, and that's also to go with the new pay plan that you all approved last March, April, I think, of last year. We did, did eight percent last year, six percent this year, and hopefully be able to do something really good again next year, 'cause our goal with that new pay plan was to improve all employees' salary by twenty percent in a two-to-three-year cycle, and, and we're on track to do that. So, that's good. And we've made some various adjustments throughout this fiscal year, as, as we had people training and promotions. So, you know, we're, we're trying to get up there and stay competitive with our, our surrounding, you know, departments. I know City of Knoxville did a rather large one this year for their police department, which is good for them. You know, I, I tried, and Chief and I talk about it, you know, thank God, patrolling streets in Clinton, hopefully it's not as dangerous as patrolling streets in, in Knoxville. But, you know, we still trying to get our starting salary and our, our experienced guys up there in all departments. We did convert, well, employee health, health insurance, we did recommend still one hundred percent paying of it. We did a ten percent increase. We won't actually have those numbers until about October, November, but that's, we don't anticipate anything over ten percent. Converted one part-time dispatcher into a full-time dispatcher. We maintain our TCRS contribution at seven percent, which is about a little over half of what they recommended, but that just helps us in a, in a days that we can't make that, we have that fund built up. We also converted a part-time fire department personnel into a full-time, which for the first time, July one, when we, we hired this other one. Last year, we added one. We added another one during this year due to some funds. We will now have nine firemen per shift. That's the first time ever, I think, I think back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, I think we had five or six shifts, so we almost doubled our personnel in the fire department. Miskulanius items, of course, we've added fifteen thousand dollars for the administrative hearing officer. That first hearing will be set, I think it's the second or, no?
Fourth Thursday.
First, fourth, I think it's the fourth Thursday of July will be our first administrative hearing. So, we put fifteen thousand in the budget for the hearing officer. We did increase training, both for police and fire, not a whole lot, but by three thousand dollars, helped them out a little bit. We had a request from the Main Street USA program for a ten thousand additional contribution. There, we'd had an original three-year commitment of twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That commitment's up this year, so it would be a new commitment. They did ask for ten thousand more. Right now, we have that in the budget. And we did add five thousand to Public Works for the traffic calming that we may be experiencing. Questions?
I'm talking administrative officer, like if there's an issue, does codes go strictly, straight to that? Or do they come before us, and we recommend that it goes to...
It goes straight to them.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll go with...
A lot quicker process.
Right. It, it, and most, the stuff that'll go to the administrative hearing officer, the city, and we had this discussion today in city court. We had, had an issue come up, and they asked me to step in. You know, the, the, the city court is still gonna hear traffic violations, most of that stuff. The administrative hearing officer will mainly deal with property maintenance, environmental concerns, that type of issues. Everything else will still follow into the city court. I won't say the administrative officer has more power than the city judge, he, but he can, in violation cases, find the violator more than the city judge can. You know, cases come up, we went down, several of us, and watched Oak Ridge's administrative hearing last Wednesday. And the administrative hearing officer there fined a property owner five hundred dollars for a violation, but he explained to the property owner that this was rental property, and rental property is considered commercial property, and by state law, he could have fined this individual five hundred dollars a day for the violation on commercial property. So, a little more teeth. You know, my experience with this council and our previous councils is that property maintenance has always been a big issue, and with going with the new administrative hearing officer, we're going to do property maintenance guidelines that we passed on second reading last month. It's, it's gonna give the, the codes department, and, and Matt Wyner's doing a super job there, a lot more teeth to, to be able to, to get violators in compliance. And, and it's not our goal to collect money. It's our goal to get them in compliance.
Clean it up.
Clean it up.
It's, we did a lot of discussion about that, and it is, it's really gonna be a benefit to the city. Seeing no other, I guess we need to, to vote on the...
I wanted to make a comment, but let's get a motion.
Yeah, get a motion first, yeah.
Yeah, here a motion. I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Councilman McBrigh?
Uh, the Main Street contribution, I am for. I'm, I'm good with this. I would like maybe to know more about how the Main Street Board works. I know, like, we used to give money to the chamber, and there's somebody on the board from the chamber. There's probably somebody on this board. I think boards, you need to be careful. I think they need to be on a rotating basis, three-year, five-year terms, and then rotate around. But is it out of place to ask you and the mayor to maybe go forward and talk with the, the, the Main Street folks? And as the city gives more money, we need to have more accountability from the city. But I'm, I'm for it, I'm all good. But, but let's, I guess we're putting our money there. We need to put our nose there a little bit, maybe.
Mayor Burton had the conversation with me last week, which unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. And, and that would've been my recommendation, that, you know, we go ahead and pass it on first reading, which we still got second reading for everything's final, but that, that if council so wishes, Mayor Burton and I can sit down with Catherine and discuss the makeup of the board and, and the makeup for we... 'Cause we really probably need to, to renew it.
Yes, I'm, I'm all for it.
And we had the document.
The ten thousand, I'm fine with that, too. I mean, the increase and...
And we can discuss that and report, report back to council on, on...
Here's how the format's gonna be.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
But you've, we have a motion, second, on first, first reading of the FY Twenty-Four Twenty-Five Budget.
Roll call.
Let's do a roll call, Gina.
Councilman Quinnor?
Yes.
Councilman McBrigh?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dan?
Yes.
Councilman Houck, Mayor, Councilwoman Maynard?
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
First reading, the budget Twenty-Four Twenty-Five is approved. Seeing no other ordinances or resolutions, any old business, any new business. Your motion due adjourned?
Second.
Good job. Vice Mayor Dan?